Okay, do I need to do anything? Did you get the email about the details?
Let me check.
And I'll hold it up here.
Check this.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
I'll be there for the board meeting. Invite President of Psycholab, I'm just gonna read the... Apparently that was my...
Nice.
Um, it's actually slowed down.
Hey.
I know. I'll travel. It's amazing, because this time we're off to... Close in Montana.
Mm-hmm.
And then again, whatever, it was ever. Nice to know.
Where am I?
Try to balance all of that right this year or two.
What? They didn't say anything.
Are you guys getting up on here and sharing business?
I hope. You doing alright?
Been my season. Community busy?
Yeah.
Because you're preparing for the year and then you're...
Something you're having.
I'm sorry. I planned on being there.
You know. Their decisions made their way through.
I mean, I just...
Yeah, for everything in the barrel lately.
Well, I was, I was there. Thank you. I was ready. Hey, let's...
That's what we're going to...
That's the, that's the way I like to talk. I didn't tell much.
You know, it's just that, I mean, every day it's...
You're gonna be on your own up here. You're gonna be on your own up here. You're supposed to read the resolution, but... Read them up. So... Tom Farrel.
The school, one...
It's going well. Um, conferences were good, so there's still that communication that I... Versus relying on him to get the information.
They had like team, like, team websites or something that you could get in assignments or something.
There's school, there's school classroom, but I...
I did, I did bring the, um, my speech with, so if you want me to go through that whole 10-15 minutes.
Yeah, well, it was closer to 20.
They have a way to...
Should, should I start off the meeting?
Well, at least you don't have to be here, because if it proves two of you have...
There's a path. Find a classroom. Sure, maybe that, so I just need to...
It was a pamphlet.
See if...
It was a pamphlet.
Get like a weekly update, but... What about you guys?
Um, well, we have a Spanish immersion one, and they post every specific... For those three subjects.
Call the meeting to order. Please rise and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great welcome, everybody. No one needing to address the board? May I please have a motion to approve the minutes from October 5th?
Come on.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. May I please have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Are there any conflicts of interest? Hearing none, all move forward. May I please have an approval of the consent agenda?
Promote.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. We'll move on to the reports of the president.
Good afternoon, board. Please, this afternoon, to have with us our faculty and maybe recording out, but before we do that, we want to bring up two big strategic planning work that's been ongoing since last year. So with that, you have... President Tulkey, board members, I'm here to ask for your approval of this strategic plan and the change in public sector question for our mission statement and vision statement. Over the past year, we've had a committee that has been made up of external stakeholders and internal stakeholders, faculty, staff. Going through and developing...
A strategic plan for the institute for 2016 through 2021, and also a review of our mission and vision statement. One of the reasons I'm up here, I deal a lot with the Higher Learning Commission and our accreditation, and one of the things that the accreditation will ask us is, have you reviewed your mission and vision? Is it a formal process? Does it include all of your, your stakeholders? And so part of the reason to bring this forward is just to make sure we have done those steps. It's something we should always do. We do look at the mission and vision every year, and if we were to see something that we think needs to be changed, we certainly would bring that forward, but we definitely need a process that we do on a formal basis. And so every time we do a strategic plan, we will formally go through our mission and vision to make sure it's still focused on what we want it to be focused on. So you will see some changes there in that executive summary in terms of our mission, some changes in the language. The new one would read, "To educate individuals for dynamic and rewarding careers that promote lifetime success and meet the workforce needs of our region." You'll also see a new vision statement, "Educational excellence for tomorrow's workforce." And in your information, you will have received the strategic plan basically as four different pillars that we'll be working on. Want to update you a little bit on that as well. One of the things we're doing as far as the implementation for that strategic plan is we are taking our current structure of committees and teams, which fits very well into what the strategic plan is doing, and we will assign different teams, different committees, to work on different parts within each of those pillars. Then we'll be using our futures team, which is made up of faculty, staff, and administrators, to oversee the process, to make sure that every group on every pillar is getting accomplished what we've set out to accomplish. So we will be meeting as a futures team. We will have certain people that are dedicated to particular pillars to make sure that those pillars are being accomplished, that goals are being set, targets are being set, and we're actually reaching those. And then we will continue to give reports on that, both to the council and to the board, to let you know where we're at with that process. The last thing we are doing is, this is a huge project, and when you're talking about a strategic plan and all the different parts that you're trying to do, tracking that, making sure that we're not missing something, does take something to help us with that. So we're looking at a particular software. It's called Strategic Planning Online. It actually is developed for use in higher ed. So there's different modules. One of the modules is about planning, and our goal would be to start with that one and use it for planning. But it has another one on accreditation, and we can do it even for our nursing accreditation. Can put their information right in there and continue to have it available. It has another section on tracking all of your credentials of all of your faculty and staff, which is huge with Higher Learning Commission. It has a budgeting module. Eventually, we'll look at all those modules. Western Dakota has been using this, and we didn't know they had it, but I had been looking for years to find something, and I liked this one. Talked with Western Dakota, they really like it, and they're getting a lot of help from the company. So our goal will be to use our current structure, change it a little bit. We'll bring that forward and let you know how that's going to be set up. And then looking at this, getting the software implemented as well, so then we can start tracking the information to be able to give better reports and make sure we're not missing something. So what I asked him from you was a recommendation is for approval of the proposed mission, vision, and the 2016-2021 strategic plan. Any questions?
No questions for Tracy? Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve the mission, vision, and the 2016-21 strategic plan?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Just gonna say, I like your updates. I think it, it's more powerful.
Yes.
It's catchy. I mean, it's not catchy, but, or it's catchy but not cheesy. Like, it doesn't sound kind of flaky. I think it sounds really good, and it really does speak to what I feel like you guys have been trying to accomplish out there, but maybe haven't had that vision to say, "This is it." So you finally put into words.
And sometimes when you just change some words. That word "dynamic," now we have to talk about, what does that mean?
Yeah.
Rewarding. How do we prove that? So it gives us an opportunity to look in a different direction that might actually help us grow in a whole new way.
Make you think differently about things.
Yep.
I like it.
Any further discussion? We have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Opposed, same sign. Thanks, Tracy.
President Tulkey and members of the board. My name is Kristen Pluseal. I'm the Nursing Program Director at Southeast Tech, and this is Sarah Lise.
Hi, I'm the RN program coordinator.
Right. And this is our story. Yeah. So our executive summary is to provide the school board information about the nursing program at Southeast Tech and to meet faculty, staff, students, and graduates of the program. So our programs, we have two of them. We have a Licensed Practical Nursing Diploma Program. Students take one semester prerequisites and 11 months of LPN courses. They must be a certified nursing assistant or a CNA before they come into that program. And then the LPN to RN, Associate of Applied Science Degree, is one semester prerequisites. They must be licensed LPNs with work experience, and then it's one year of RN courses before they graduate with that degree. So our full-time faculty and staff, and you can see that a lot of them are here today. So we have a full-time program director and a full-time secretary for the program. The LPN program currently, we have 10 full-time faculty, and two have a master's, six have a bachelor's, two have an associate degree, and they are almost done with their bachelor's degrees. We have a full-time lab specialist who's an LPN, and you'll meet her in a little bit. We have anywhere from 16 to 20 adjunct clinical instructors each semester, and everybody has a wide variety of backgrounds and nursing experience. So it's about 35 people at any given time who are working in the nursing program when you include the RN.
With the RN program, there's three of us that work full-time. All of us have our masters, Anne also has gone on to get her nurse practitioner. She just hasn't taken boards yet for that. But we really try and teach in our specialty areas, and you can see our specialty area is listed there.
And we do have one more RN faculty member joining us in the spring full-time, and she's actually got a certified, she's a certified nurse midwife, and she's actually finishing a master's now, too. So this is our latest and greatest staff and faculty picture that we took in August at the beginning of the semester. We're missing some people in that picture, but that's, that's the most we could get together. So I just wanted to point out here, all three of us who are getting injections here, we're getting them from our students, so we do trust them. They, they do get a little nervous giving them to us, but they all did a great job, and so we were very proud of them. So that leads into the next slide, the students in the community. We did have our LPN students here at IPC administered over 1,300 shots this fall. We helped with many, many flu shots in the community in the fall semester. A lot of facilities ask us to give them to their patients when they need them all in long-term care. They ask us to give them to staff. So we help a lot with flu shots. And then our LPN student organization, we help a lot with Boy Scout learning activities. The picture on the right is when they had a mock disaster at a, outside at a park. And so there's a lot of moulage and makeup, and the Boy Scouts enjoyed that quite a bit. And then the nursing students help with that experience.
I'm gonna just jump down to the last bullet there. The RN program is accredited by ACE and nationally accredited. But that brings me up to the first bullet there. While we were getting ready for accreditation through ACE, and we had to find like a structured theory that we could surround all of our curriculum and assignments and everything around. And so we picked QSEN. It stands for Quality and Safety Education for Nurses. And the LPN program is currently adopting all of that, too, as they're moving towards a systematic plan of evaluation like what we have. Both the LPN and RN programs have full approval status from the South Dakota Board of Nursing. Since the RN program is accredited by ACE, and we no longer have to have Board of Nursing site visits, but the LPN program still does. And they just actually had theirs last week and have been approved for another four years.
Okay. So this picture shows a few things in our facilities. We have been extremely fortunate to have wonderful equipment. We have 12 simulators right now. We have four different, three different simulator suites. The OB, we have two of the OB simulators that actually deliver a simulator baby, and that's what the student in the middle is holding, a simulator baby. And then we have the, the gentlemen on the right are called I-Stans. And so we have a number of those, and I was just in with the RN students today, and they had a simulation running with three different simulators going at the same time. So they had, she had extra help. But it was very, very interesting to watch the students when they had more than one patient. And they knew that one of them was on hospice care, but the other one tanked and died.
Unexpectedly.
Unexpectedly. And they did not know that was gonna happen. So it, it's a great way for us to teach them things without actually having, you know, we don't try to kill patients when we're at clinical.
Yes.
So our LPN students, this is a picture of one of our graduates, and they can be a wide range of ages. I'd say 18 up to 50. They can be recent high school graduates. They can be somebody who's, you know, displaced from their job, seeking another career. They might be trying college for the first time. They might have tried college and not liked it. So we have a number of different LPN groups. We have a full-time day program, and we start 54 in that every fall. And every January, we have an evening program for those who are working full-time. The day program, we ask students not to work any more than 20 hours a week if they want to be successful. And so we have, last spring, total LPN and RN. At any given time last spring, we had between 150 and 170 students in the nursing program. And we have an LPN student here. Kaysha Barth is due to graduate in December, and she's actually came from her site where she's working with a licensed LPN or RN at her preceptor site. So she's gonna talk a little bit.
Hi. I'm really nervous. Um, I guess I chose Southeast because I heard good things about it. I'm sorry. I guess, I, I love it there. One thing I can tell you is they have prepared me very well for the nursing program. My first day of the actual program of lab, which was a year ago, I left and I bawled, and I'm like, "This is not for me. I, I can't do this. I'm so afraid." I pushed through this program, and I don't think I've ever felt more confident in anything. I feel super prepared to become a nurse. Never thought that was ever gonna happen. I also, it just met all my expectations of a school that I wanted. I got it from them. I also had a situation at the beginning of the year. I have a son, he's a year and a half, and he was very sick, ended up on life support at the beginning of the year. So I had to drop the program, but I had all of their support to get me through it. And I picked up back the summer again, and I just, one of my goals was to be able to go to my teachers with anything, and I was able to do that, still able to do that. I'm not just another student there. I'm an actual person, and I, I matter there. So I plan on going back for my RN there. I love it. I'm a big advocate for them, so, yeah. But, yeah.
With the RN program, all of our students that come in have to have their LPN license, and we do require them to have a minimum of 750 work hours coming in. We want them to have some experience working as an LPN prior to our program. A lot of our students do continue to work full-time. We do encourage them to cut back to part-time, but it really matters on how organized they are from the very beginning of the program. The, the first semester seems to be the most challenging for them. I don't know if it's just getting back into the swing of things with school, but if we can get them organized from the start, they do seem to be more successful. Like I said, some of them continue to work full-time because they need the insurance and they have to pay bills, but some of them do cut back to part-time just to manage the load. As far as lecture goes, we have them in class one day a week for lecture. And then throughout the entire, throughout the entire course of the program, we have them there for 18 days of clinical. So it's not near as much as what they do for LPN, but we still have them doing something. And then at the end, they have 144-hour practicum where they're gonna follow another RN, and basically a facility where, where they're choosing to go or maybe work. So I think that's it on mine. Yeah. Bob, he is currently in the RN program right now. He has graduated from the LPN program, and he's currently in the RN program right now, and he is set to finish in December, so.
President of the board and members of the board, thank you for allowing me to speak. Yes, I was a graduate in 2015. I am a non-traditional student, second career for myself, military man. And again, I chose Southeast for the LPN program. Very good program. From the business office all the way to the admissions seamless process, be able to come through, that was the reason I chose to back, come, come back through for the RN program. You know, prepare you for boards. Very well-run program, so again, thank you for the support for there. Again, just a very good program there to prepare you for, for life, so. But, thank you.
So we won't bore you with too much data, but we wanted to let you know the impact that the program has had. The current LPN program was started in 2001, and since then, we've had over 1,000 graduate from the LPN program. And I would say that the vast majority of those would not be nurses if it wasn't for this program. They just, for various reasons, they need to do it in chunks of time. We have two program starts for day, and then we have an evening program. So we have a total of 130 to 140 accepted each year. Our graduation rate is consistently greater than 80%. Our board pass rates over the past three years were 98.6% compared to the national average of 82.5. So we're very proud of our board results, but more importantly, we're very proud of our graduates and the quality nurses that they are when they come out of the program. And then I wanted to mention the TACTT grant, which is ending at the end of March, but through the TACTT grant for the LPN, the funds were used to do, to build two simulation trailers. One is now being used for CNA, and one we're still using out in peer. So we did take the program to Chamberlain, put the courses online, and they're in-person for lab and clinical. And all seven who graduated in Chamberlain passports, first time they took them, so that was exciting. We have a class of four students in peer who will complete in March. And then along with that, we have started one cohort for Sanford. They asked us to start a group of Sanford that, that they are helping with either through Build Dakota scholarships or paying for those, and they commit to working for Sanford. So we're starting a second cohort this January and a third cohort in January of '18. So very busy with the TACTT grant, and that has helped us get a lot of our simulations. So we've been very, very fortunate with that.
With the RN program, we started our first class in January of 2012, and so we graduated them December of 2012. Since then, we've had 102 graduates from the start of the program, which is kind of amazing. We accept 24 students twice a year in January and in August. Our retention rates are consistently above 75%, and the reason we picked that number is we had to do so for our national accreditation. So we have a benchmark to AMAT, and we're consistently above that. Our board pass rates, we do monitor the board pass rates, but also a three-year mean, because we have to do so for accreditation, and we're consistently above the three-year mean national, or the national average. And then also for the state Board of Nursing, we have to meet 75%, and we're consistently above that. So far, for 2016, our board pass rate is 89.4. So that's a picture of our last graduating class, and all of them have taken boards in the past, so.
And just a little bit about job placement. We have 100% job placement. When we do the statistics, also, if they're going back to school, if they're not working as an LPN or an RN, it's because they're in school generally. And the salary information, I believe, is in your PowerPoints. And the salaries are definitely going up. There's a lot of competition right now for nurses. They're earning sign-on bonuses, and nobody can leave and take those. But, yeah, we've heard of $10,000 sign-on bonuses at various places. So the impact, we have, if you've gone, I mean, I am positive that you have met our graduates somewhere if you go to any healthcare facilities in this region. They work at many different places, clinics, hospitals, long-term care hospice, the Penn, the county jail. Many of the RN students go on to complete their BSN online, and that has been wonderful for them because they're done with boards, and so they can work as RNs while they're doing that. And we have some staff success stories. And so Bernadette and Sarah are gonna come up first and explain a little bit about their history.
Hi, my name is Bernadette Willowite, and I am a proud graduate of the LPN program at Southeast Tech. I graduated from this program over 30 years ago. I've been working in this community in hospitals and clinics. And eight years ago, I had the opportunity to come back to Southeast Tech and work with the LPNs in this program, and I am their full-time lab specialist.
Hi, I'm Sarah Lang. I am a twice-graduate of STI. I was a non-trad student in 2008. I graduated with my LPN, and I decided to go back to school. I was actually enrolled in another school, and when Southeast started the RN program, I transferred so I could be part of that, and I graduated in 2012 with the RN. And I've been in faculty for two years now. It's been just a privilege to be able to teach and give back to the students. It's just a wonderful program.
And then we have Brittany and our newest staff member, full-time staff, Myra, and they're gonna speak.
Good afternoon. My name is Brittany Maurer, and I am a full-time faculty member with the LPN program, and I'm also an alumni of the LPN program, having graduated with the Diploma of PN program. Had there been an RN program when I graduated with the LPN, I definitely would have gone back to Southeast Tech. However, it did not exist at that time. I went on to a different school to obtain an associate's, and then another school for a bachelor's, and now I'm in a master's program for nursing. I have experience in critical care, pediatrics, and women's health, all within the Sioux Falls community. And I chose Southeast Tech because of the excellent reputation within the community. I am very honored to work now for Southeast Tech in the nursing program. Very proud of our board pass rates, proud of how excellent our students do in the community, and just the reputation we have everywhere. I really feel like Southeast Tech prepared me for my career path and my goals in life. Thank you.
My name's Myra Workmeister. I am a 2014 graduate from the RN program. I'm currently pursuing my bachelor's at DWU. I'm the fourth person in my family to graduate from Southeast Tech, and collectively, we've finished seven programs at the school. Yeah, it's kind of a lot. So the reason I came to Southeast, I did my LPN elsewhere just because it was a hybrid course, and at that time, there wasn't really a hybrid option. But I was going to go to RN at DWU, but there wasn't really an option for non-traditional students, and I had three children. So, I mean, pretty much I had to have a little bit of flexibility, and the program was excellent. They were going through the accreditation process at that time, and I couldn't believe that it even took... that it even took that long, but they have to have, you know, jump through some hoops and stuff. But it's an excellent program. I recommend it to anybody, even the LPN program. I will recommend anybody to go. I started teaching adjunct in February, just part-time, helping out long-term care facilities most of the time, and then I had an opportunity to come on full-time, so here I am.
So, we would appreciate acknowledgement of the Southeast Tech. This is our story report for the nursing program. Any questions for us?
What a great report.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No questions, but as a nurse myself, I can appreciate the work that you guys are doing, and there's such a need for nurses, whether it's LPNs or RNs or master's prepared. We need teachers to teach new nurses, and so it's really fun to listen to the experience that you have and the different paths that you have taken, because all of that brings so much value to the program as a whole. And, you know, one of you may be able to speak about women's health, and another person can speak about critical care, and that whole picture is really what nursing students need to have throughout their education. So, thank you to all of you for your dedication, and I can, I can just hear in your voices the passion and the pride that you have, and that really is easily transmitted to students, whether it's in the classrooms or whether when they go out into their workforce too and are taking care of patients in a real personal way. So, your hard work makes difference to everybody that you're working with, patients and students, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for my flu shot.
Hopefully, it didn't hurt too much.
It was great.
That's good.
Well, not great, but. Any further questions? Hearing none, may I have a motion to acknowledge the nursing program?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you.
President Tulkey, members of the Board, Jim Jacobson, Vice President of Academics, wanted to start out by thanking the nursing team. I think, I'm not a baseball fan, but baseball fans had a big celebration last night, if you were a certain kind of fan, but I think they hit it out of the park. When we presented this concept to you a month ago, as you know, this is going to be the first of 14 or 15 reports to highlight our different program options on campus. And when academic services put a call out to who would be willing to go first, Kristin was in my office the next morning. And I have to tell you that when President Griggs and I reviewed the PowerPoint, I think that will serve as the template, so let's thank them again. I can tell you that working in the health building, I am a morning person. I go in very early, but I've never worked anywhere where students beat me to work. I can tell you that I see Bob multiple times a week in the halls, in the office, so, they're a hard-working group, so. I'm here to spend a couple minutes talking about a project that we're undertaking on campus to talk about the potential for some certificate programs at Southeast. And we're studying certificates as an additional educational model to offer potential students' choice in beginning their higher education career, but also to help meet the needs of workforce. When Craig, Peters, Lonherd, myself, or President Griggs attend advisory committee meetings for different programs, we're hearing one common theme: We need more of your graduates, and we need them sooner. And certificate programs may be an option that might help meet those needs. Certificate programs allow students to learn specific career skills in order to obtain a job or to specialize in their careers. Certificates are credit-bearing programs of study which provide students with industry-recognized credentials and are specifically aligned with industry-recognized standards. Certificate programs can also provide an additional educational pathway for students who are interested in beginning their higher education experience. And so, certificate programs really fit nicely into two really big concepts and buzzwords that are going on in higher education right now, and that's the whole concept of stackable and latticed learning or credentials. So, there's really three primary categories of different kinds of credentials. The first is stackable. You think about a certificate as that entry-level educational experience for someone. We hope that they come back and earn an associate's degree, excuse me, a diploma, then an associate's degree, and then a bachelor's or perhaps more. A good example of a stackable credential that fits well with this evening's report is the CNA program. Three or four years ago, the health team got together as a group and decided that we were occasionally getting students in our health programs that didn't really understand that I have to deal with patients, and there might be some kind of ooh that goes with that. I'm not a healthcare person, so the health team loves to talk about certain things at lunch in the break room. I call it goo, they make fun of me, but we decided that we want to help students make good choices as they enter programs, so we decided to make the CNA program an entrance requirement for our health programs, and it's really been a very successful experience. And so, when you think about CNAs, then they can progress to an LPN, then they can progress to an RN, and then hopefully, they'll go on for that bachelor's. That's a really good example of a stackable credential. Latticed is more of that horizontal expansion of skills within a program area. A good example of that would be one of our business students, in one of our business programs, may choose to specialize in project management and earn a certificate on top of their degree that gives them additional skills that look good on a resume and that employers are looking for, and help them be a valuable team member. And then, the third area of certificate programs are standalone, and probably the best example of that would be our CDL program. We have, in the past, run our CDL program through Training Solutions Institute. As you know, due to budget constraints during the last year, we're in the process of restructuring that, but CDL is one of the programs that we're looking at as a potential certificate that we could convert to a credit program. Some certificates that we're looking at will be significant enough that the Department of Education is looking at a process to count them as completers. President Griggs, when he attends the Technical Institute President meetings, when Vice President Noldner and I attend the Vice President meetings at the state level, we've been talking about this with the Department of Education for more than a year, and they are on a path, we believe, that we're going to have the opportunity to recognize students who earn certificates as a completer, and that would be a big positive impact for us. And let me give you a reason why. Let's take our auto program, which is a very successful degree program. We occasionally have students who do really well in their auto classes, but they might not be really excited about taking their Gen Eds. What happens is, they'll complete all of their auto courses with an A or B, but if they don't get all of their Gen Eds done, Tracy and Kristy Vorthrims, our registrar, are not able to count them as a graduate for our state data. However, the way our curriculum is built, throughout their course of study, they are in two ASE certifications while they're with us, which help them get employed. So, as we look at how we can possibly work through this project and maybe restructure curriculum, that's an opportunity to start grabbing those students, counting them as graduates or completers, and acknowledging the work that faculty have done. Because when that student does well in those auto classes, goes out and gets a job in the auto field, and works on President Tulkey's car, they are having an impact in the economy, aren't they? And you and your wife are glad that your car is running. So, we're hoping that the state continues down that path, that we can look at counting them as completers. We are planning, the models that we're looking at, our goal is to, whatever certificate programs we offer, we would like to attach college credit for them, so that we can really build on that stackable concept, and hopefully, when we get some of those students as completers in a certificate program, we get them back on campus for a diploma or a degree program. Any questions?
That's great.
Thank you, and I would just ask that the Board acknowledge our report. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Any questions? Hearing none, may I have a motion to acknowledge the certificate program?
So move. Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That passes, thank you. Rich?
Good afternoon, members of the Board, President Tulkey. I do appreciate, when I look at the agenda, having healthcare people here as I do my oral presentation. I hope this can be a reoccurring theme every quarter in case I tank up here. So, please keep that in your scheduling plans as we move forward. Just brief on the quarterly report, this will reflect July through September. The first document that we want to take a look at are the current cash balances as of September 2016. As we present before you folks, this is really the low point in terms of our cash balances as we proceed through the year. So, we would expect to see a little bit smaller balance. You'll see different things as we go into each month subsequent to that. The other thing you have to look at when you look at these cash balances is to take it in line with what is on that consolidated trust and agency report that was in the consent agenda, and the way our funds are handled out there, they're held as trust account until they actually get transferred over to the district or to the general ledger. So, this is reflecting general ledger balances, but if you noticed in our tuition and fees account in that report, there was roughly $7 million cash in there. That'll be transferred down, or has been transferred down already, the majority of it, $6 million, I think we brought down this last month. You'll see that cash balance increase, so there's always that little bit of lag there. So, just I want folks to focus on just this cash balance on this report. There is another element to it as we hold those funds in trust until they are transferred to you. We have five funds, as we've talked about, or actually four. The post-secondary fund is obviously our largest fund, the bookstore fund, the food service fund hasn't geared up yet. The folks were just hired at the first part of October. The food service opened last part of October, so you'll start to see that rolling through here in the next reports, and especially in the quarterly report that we do in January, or actually February. The post-secondary childcare fund, and then the training solutions fund, and this is going to be part of an audit entry when we're done to close that fund out, and that cash will go against the post-secondary, that negative cash balance, go against the post-secondary fund. The fund summary reports, as we take a quick look at those, kind of a couple things that I tend to always look at in these, there's one thing I always want to point out, is that on the revenue side of things, because of that trust and agency accounting for it, the revenue always lags a month. So, when we talk about the first quarter report here, it'd be in July, August, September, this is only reflecting activity July and August in our trust account. That September report, that September activity won't show up until the next month's report, and that's just a timing difference associated with it. The expenditures are reflective of the first quarter, so that does reflect three months' worth of activity. And I'm going to do something that sometimes accountants like to do, they like to read from the bottom up. But I want to point out to the subtotal line in here when we look at the percentage, and one of the things I'll talk about after this report is that operating task as we move forward throughout the year. That task is really looking at identifiable things, things that we're aware of, things that we can measure, things that we know. There's a whole bunch of other things that are going on just on a day-to-day basis. This document gives you a little bit of a reflection of that. So, when you look at that first quarter report and looking at those operating expenses, you see that we're at 20.92% of what our budget is. I think that's reflective of some of the efforts that are being made and the cost savings across campus, and what we're trying to do. When you do that, we're not at 25% of it, and in our particular funding mechanism, the capital is what always throws that off, so we've isolated that in the bottom section of it. So, as you look across this, I, from my perspective, I'm not seeing anything that jumps off the page as unusual or out of the ordinary. I'm looking at that percentage of expenditures through the first quarter of the year being less than 25% as a positive thing and a move in the right direction overall. Those savings won't be realized, we won't measure them, and we'll do that as part of our budget process. I always project out where I think we're going to end in March when we start to do that, and that's when we'll get a real sense for where we're going to wind up for the year. But looking back, looking at that cash balance of the money that's coming down, we're still in a very strong financial position, but we're still challenged. We're still challenged with those enrollments. If you were out at the ribbon-cutting today, which President Griggs is going to ask for a little license to address you after I'm done as well, you heard Mayor Huether talk about Sioux Falls having the lowest unemployment in the nation at less than 2%, 1.9%. We've correlated that before to our revenue stream that high unemployment equates to, or higher unemployment equates to greater enrollments. Low unemployment has a direct impact on our enrollment. So, talking about what Jim was talking about in terms of those stackable credentials, it gets them on a path. Yes, we're helping the workforce, we're meeting that mission, but it also allows them to come in and get some education. Things slow down, it's an opportunity to come back and pick up and start doing some of that stackable types of things. So, we see some of these things as investments into the future that we hope we'll realize. I don't think we want to, I want to stand before you and say I really hope that the economy tanks to improve our enrollment. I don't think that serves anybody. So, any questions about the post-secondary vocational fund as it relates to the report? I didn't get into a lot of specific numbers, other than just the generalities that things are progressing as we would anticipate them to do. I won't spend a lot of time on the other reports. The bookstore fund is our second-largest fund, and that includes, obviously, the book sales, but also includes laptops. Our revenue is up a little bit as compared to this time last year. It really has a lot to do with publisher costs. They increased substantially. Obviously, we have to pass that on to students, and it's also looking a little bit at our margins. The expenditure sides, the majority of it are obviously those items that we're purchasing for resale. This is a cash component of it, it's not really reflecting that inventory, but we're in line with where we need to be as it relates to that particular fund. Food service fund, that's just reflective of the budget, just because there's not activity yet. That'll start up in October. Actually, won't see it until the report after the next one, it won't show up until January. And then the childcare fund is the next one. That is one that we gave a cash infusion to last year to help stabilize it. In fact, opening up the services to the Sioux Falls teachers has helped greatly with some consistent cash flows and consistent revenues, so I think that's heading in the right direction as well as we move forward on that. The last one, I'm not going to talk about this, is just that closeout as it relates to training solutions, but there is a little bit of activity that will, some residual types of things that will get cleaned off of there, but that'll all be part of that closeout process related to the audit. The next, or the final document that's before you is a statement of cash flow, both in terms of year-to-date and then month-to-date of how we're utilizing cash. So, it's not just one thing to look at the cash, but it's looking at what happens in there. What's the revenue coming in? What's the change in our receivables? Are receivables going up? Are liabilities going down? These types of things reflect that, and it ties out to that initial cash balance report that I showed you with the 2.9 million in existing cash as of the end of September, and again, pointing out that $7 million or so that'll work its way down into, ties general ledger. Very high-level summary of the first-quarter financials, and stand by for any questions that anyone would have related to that.
Questions? Need a motion to approve the report of Southeast Tech's FY '17 first quarter financials?
So move.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Great.
Thank you. The next report I have on there is the executive sum-
The next report I have on there is the executive summary relating to the operating task. Going forward, we'll tie these reports into our quarterly report, so you won't have to hear from me every single month. We'll still prepare this at our level and we'll continue to monitor and track these things and then we'll report out orally each quarter. Some of the changes as we look, I just accumulated the July-through-September variants that we reported on last month and then looked at some of these major things. As I told you last time, the tuition student fees, the tuition buy-down, those are all credit-related things. This is the one that's going to be dynamic and we're going to see move throughout the year. And really, what I'm doing is just comparing year-to-date from this year to year-to-date last year. Doesn't necessarily mean that that's what's going to happen, but we want to get that on the board. Could be next month it'll turn around. So, there was a little bit of an increase in the decline in credits. As of the end of last month, when I reported, it was about 3.2% down from the prior year. When I look at end of October, it's down 3.86%. These numbers reflect that increase in that percentage. And it's really just a timing difference of when students terminate or when things happen. That's what's happening now. That's what'll happen in the next couple months as it relates to this report. So, it could be in the next report, it could turn around and go the other way if the terminations are all incurred during this reporting time and in the next reporting time, those terminations don't exist, it could actually move the other way. So, the needle's going to move on this one quite a bit, but we want to make sure we're transparent and are continuing to reporting that. Had a couple other positive things as it relates to variances on there, the state aid formula, we're picking up a little bit of that. There's an audit entry that was made, or that will be made, that's going to impact our state aid for FY '17. That's based on some revenues that were reported in '16. There was an error in the deferred revenue calculation and it has a downstream effect with the, with the state aid funding. So, we're going to pick up a little bit on that. Then we had a resignation in the student success area and this is reflective of an estimate of what the salary and benefit savings will be. We're going to hold on that position for the balance of the fiscal year and look at our programming as we develop the FY '18 budget. So, that number's moving in the right direction in this particular month, picked up a little bit. And again, we'll continue to monitor this monthly and I'll report out to you, to you folks on a quarterly basis. So, again, stand by for any questions related to this.
Any questions? Hearing none, I need a motion to acknowledge the FY '17 operating efficiency task update.
So move.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Great.
And as I stated, President Griggs asked for a little bit of license to, to address the board just briefly.
Thanks, Rich. Just a couple of quick thank-yous. First, thank you again to the nursing program, the faculty and the staff and the students that were here this afternoon. As Vice President Jacobson said, I think they've set the bar kind of high for the, for the next group that comes in, so thank you for your good work. And it is just that, I think, I'm glad you noted the pride, I think, that not only the faculty feel, but I think the students that are part of that program feel. This morning, we had the dedication, the ribbon-cutting for our newest building, the hub building, the culmination of 15, 16 months of construction, but years, years of planning and lobbying and work. And I wanted to say a thank you to the admin team. Every one of those individuals over there was quite literally heavily involved in different aspects, as you can imagine, bringing on a building of that size. What I was really extremely proud of, you know, as the president, I get to stand up front and receive the welcome and the congratulations from all these different individuals in the community. And it was extremely well-attended. I think we had over, well, close to probably 250 to 300 individuals, community members, legislators, a number of different representatives from advisory boards and a lot of our students and faculty. And I think I was extremely proud, there again, of some comments that was made by one of the chamber ambassadors, who was a graduate of Southeast Tech and spoke how that program changed his life and really opened doors for him. And now, he's doing quite well and successful, but he gave a lot of that credit to the individuals, the faculty, the staff, and administrators at Southeast Tech. So, they did a tremendous job, you know, pulling this project together. And again, I wanted to just say thank you to all of them for their hard work for the diesel and auto programs. Those faculty came in over the summer to make sure classes were ready to go. The building wasn't quite done, so they did a lot of nights and weekends that you don't hear about. But again, it was that pride, that desire to provide the best learning experience we can. So, again, I had the opportunity to sit up front and, and receive all the congratulations and thank-yous. And it's every one of these individuals that, that really should, should be congratulated and thanked, so I just wanted to do that. Thank you, guys. It's a wonderful facility and I hope you do have the chance to, to come out. And I'm almost positive that Vice President Kuhn will buy lunch.
Anything else for the good of the cause? May I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Adjourn?
[applause]